The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, we have the Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 24th, 2024. Oh, sorry, roll call. So sorry. No, I got knocked over by the former chair.
Roll call for the evening. We're going to start with Chairwoman Lauren McClellan. Thank you. Vice Chairman Kamar Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kara Derry.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Adam Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Andrew Elba, alternate one. And Jonathan Dickinson, alternate two. Okay, you may proceed.
Oh, Lauren, I can do that. So I'll start with the approval of the minute of the September 24th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minute as submitted.
I second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes unanimous. Okay, so the first item on the agenda, application number 24-043A, our El Boga Don signage. The applicant NT Signs Inc. on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC. Sorry.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Is requesting architecture approval to install new signage on the existing building for a property located at 10201 Southern Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the applicant present? Can you go to the podium over there, sir, and state your name for the commission for the record?
My name is Rodolfo.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand? This is a quasi judicial proceeding. I'm going to swear you in and I'm going to swear on staff at the same time. Do you both swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Bye, Josu.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Application 24-043AAR applicants requesting architectural approval for a new wall sign on an existing building located at 10201 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Village Shops on 441 Plaza. On your screen, the plaza is highlighted in blue. The primary sign include colors is trademark for El Boga Don. This slide illustrates the proposed signage on the wall. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-043AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation, sir?
Oh, okay. All right, I don't know exactly what is the problem with the with the signs of. We are, actually, we are under the 121 square footage allowed because we are 120.5. On previous meetings, like Zoom meetings, they told me everything was okay. We went through all the comments and hopefully we are okay with the rest of it. I don't know if we we done with it or not. I don't know if we missing something.
If I could, Madam Chair, so he's right. He went through the village's TSR process, Technical Staff Reboot Process, and his application was certified. That's how he's here tonight. So there's no issues with your application. The planner has indicated that staff is recommending approval as is submitted in the package, okay?
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Is there any comments from the board? No. Is there any public comments? Not seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move to approve application 24-043AAR.
Thank you.
Try that one more time.
I'll second.
A motion made by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you so much.
The second item on the agenda is application number 24-107AAR. Show monument signs, the applicant shark signs LLC on behalf of Retano Enterprises Inc. is requesting architectural approval to change the faces of existing monument signs for a property located at 1201 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Marco A. Gomez.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? This is also a quasi judicial hearing. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 24-107AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to change the face of an existing monument sign. The property is located at 1201 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed monument sign and details. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-107AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
No.
No, okay. Are there any questions, comments by the board? Is there any public comment? No. Is there a?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there anyone on, I don't know if we have anybody on the computer. If we could just verify that there's no public comment from the computer as well.
No, ma'am, we're still good.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve application number 24-107 as submitted.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is application number 24-105AAR, El Carwash. The applicant Justin Lindau on behalf of El Carwash Southern East LLC is requesting architectural approval to repaint the exterior of an existing building to branded colors for a property located at 11453 Southern Boulevard. Mitty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your name for the record, sir?
Anne Polacek.
This is still a quasi judicial proceeding. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Could you raise your right hand for me and I'll swear you in? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll turn to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Josu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 24-105AAR. The applicant El Carwash is requesting architectural approval to repaint the exterior of an existing building with trademark colors for a property located at 11453 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the facades and paint colors. Primary color is highly reflective white, SW 7757. Secondary color is rhinestone, SW 7656. Trim color is evening shadow, SW 7662. Base and doors color is gauntlet gray, SW 7019. Accent color is pentone 232. HEX number E04B9B. And logo accent, as well as the vacuum arm color, will be pentone 3252. HEX number 10CFC9. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-105 as submitted. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
I do not, but consistent with Josu said. Thank you for that, Josu. This application is really just to address a notice of violation from the village regarding the alteration of the previous color palette. And this really just brings it up to standard with all the other El Car washes in the area, Royal Palm Beach Wellington.
Thank you. Is there any board questions, comments?
No.
Is there any public comment? No, no. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-105 as submitted.
I second that motion.
Great, thank you. So motion made by Commissioner Derry, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See that it passes unanimous. Moving along to item four on the agenda, application number 22-175AAR, Royal Plaza South. The applicant Yellow Bird International Corp. is requesting architectural approval for exterior modifications in order to remove the current fascia and repaint the stucco and repaint and stucco existing buildings 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 5, 6, 7, 8A, 8B, 12, and 13 for a property located at 200 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Mitty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is that, let me ask you just a favor. Is that microphone light on in front of you?
Yes.
Just get very close to that microphone. That last applicant was very hard to hear up here. Can you state your names for the record?
Carlos Justiniano.
Ma'am?
Veronica Espaleta.
Thank you. As you've heard the previous applications, this is still a quasi judicial hearing. Could you raise your right hands for me? I'll swear you both in. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 24-175AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval for exterior modifications in order to remove the current facade and repaint and stucco existing building 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 5, 6, 7, 8A, 8B, 12, and 13. The property is located at 200 Royal Plaza, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, I'm sorry. This slide illustrates the overall key map of the plans identifying the buildings that will be impacted. The facades been changed. This slide illustrates the proposed repainted materials for building five and six, seven, as well as eight B. This slide illustrates the elevation for proposed building 12, 12C and B. This slide illustrate the elevations for building two, building one. This slide illustrates the proposed elevation for building 13. Staff is recommending approval of application number 22-175AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josu. Do you guys have a presentation?
Yes, we did, but I don't see it loaded here. Okay, I guess I didn't get the presentation, but our vision for the project is to, of course, rejuvenate the plaza. The plaza as it currently stands has not had any major renovations since the 80s. So our goal is to, through using a color palette, as you see in the images of white, grays, red, and black, to give it a activated contemporary look to not only attract more clients but as well as additional businesses to the plaza. So we're looking forward to getting this approval and enhancing this area for the community.
Thank you. So back to the board. Is there any questions?
Oh, I think it looks nice. We love to see updates.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree with that as well. I used to frequent that plaza a lot in my youth and I'm excited to see the new changes. It's a nice facelift.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve application number 22-175 as submitted.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? See that it passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item five, application number 24-037LW, Willow Plaza Landscape. The applicant Solid State Design Consultants on behalf of Kennet of Palm Beach Inc. is requesting a landscape waiver from section 15-133B1 to allow for a four-foot wide perpendicular divider strip where the village code requires five feet in width for a property located at 11328 Okeechobee Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your name, sir, for the record?
Chad Mackey.
Raise your right hand. This is a quasi judicial hearing. I'll swear you in. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 24-037, landscape waiver. The applicant is requesting a landscape waiver to allow for a four-foot wide perpendicular divider strip where village code requires five feet when two rows of parking stalls face each other. The reduction in the width of the perpendicular divider strip is to accommodate a five-foot wide sidewalk which provides access away from the handicap parking stalls to a crosswalk. Property is located at 11328 Okeechobee Boulevard. Waiver, the applicant is requesting a waiver from section 15-133B1 and that's to allow for four-foot width landscape area within a perpendicular divider island where the village code requires five feet. The waiver will reduce the required width by one foot. The landscape area will contain all required landscape materials per code. The applicant contends that they are required to provide ADA parkings as well as the pathways. So this calls the divider median not to meet the requirements for the appropriate landscape of five feet. So staff generally concurs with the applicant's assessment. Staff believe that this is the minimum waiver necessary to allow reasonable use of the provided ADA parking spaces. Staff request for recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council regarding application number 24-037, landscape waiver, and order LW 24-02. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
Not really, but thank you, Josu. And I would like to say it's good to see such an organized city government. You guys are really on top of it. Yeah, basically, we're just doing an ADA modification and upgrade. Currently, the site isn't ADA compliant. We're adding a space and relocating those two spaces so that they get an adequate path of travel to the shopping plaza.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? No. Any public comment? No. Is there a motion? Is there any board discussion? Sorry. I do like you guys. I don't want you not to follow. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve application 24-078.
37.
24-037. Getting ahead of myself there.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? See that it passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item six, application number 24-078LW. Aldi Distribution Expansion. The applicant Insight Studio on behalf of Al Florida, AI Florida, AI Florida, Division South DC LLC is requesting a landscape waiver from section 15133B to eliminate the required perpendicular divider strips, a minimum of five feet in width for a property located at 1171 North State Road 7.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your name for the record, ma'am?
Logan Capone.
Do you raise your right hand for me? I'll swear you in. This is still a quasi judicial proceeding. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Josu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application before you is application number 24-078, landscape waiver. The applicant is requesting a landscape waiver from section 15-133B and that's to eliminate the required five-foot wide perpendicular divider strips. The property is located at 1171 North State Road 7. Waivers from section 15-133B1 to allow for the elimination of the required perpendicular divider strips within the proposed parking lot expansion. This application has been reviewed concurrently with site plan modifications as well, which will be the next item on the agenda. The area highlighted in green represent the affected area for the divider strip on your screen. The applicant contends that the waiver request is due to site constraints involving stormwater management. Staff does not concur with the applicant's justification. Staff believe that the waiver exceeds what is necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Staff request for recommendations of denial be submitted to the Village Council regarding application number 24-078LW and order LW 24-03. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any question. Thank you.
Thank you, Josu. And do you have a presentation?
Yes. All right, there we go. So I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Logan Capone, a planner on the project. In the audience tonight, we also have some members of the Aldi team that came all the way from Ohio and North Carolina to be here, as well as the engineer who's all here to answer any questions as they might come up. Thank you to Josu and Alicia and Mitty for working with us on this application so far. And I hope we can all continue to work together to get this approved. First and foremost, Aldi's core values are simplicity to keep costs down, consistency in providing the highest quality products, and responsibility in how they reduce their environmental footprint. Josu's already really covered a lot of the requests, but I would just like to restate our justification so that we have two requests in front of you. First, we're talking about the landscape waiver, and then I can answer details about the site plan and architectural review when we get to that application. Everyone is probably familiar with where the site is, on the corner of Aldi Way and State Road 7. This parking, this expansion and associated parking lot are in the rear of the site, not visible from the public way. And you can see in that starred area. This application has to do with parcel one of the Aldi Park PID. It's approximately 42,000 square feet. It was previously approved in 2012. So the original resolution did have some waivers associated with it for landscaping, and we are trying to fit into the context of the formerly approved project. I will touch on this slide in the next presentation, but this is the parking area in question, as Josu also highlighted on his slides. And our main justification for not wanting to build the perpendicular divider strips within the parking lot are that it would expand and increase our parking surface area and decrease that retention area that we have to the south of the site. In studying this, it would decrease the retention area, so much so that we would have to do exfiltration or underground stormwater systems, where right now everything is above ground. We also are compliant with all of the other district limited industrial and planned Aldi, the planned performance standards. As you can see, this is a Google Earth image of the existing parking lot for Aldi. They do provide wheel stops and the islands that terminate each parking aisle, but they do not have that perpendicular parking strip. So we would really just like to fit into the existing context. So additional parking area, as I mentioned, would reduce our capacity for surface area stormwater on the site. Granting the waiver from our assertions would have no negative impacts on public safety or public welfare. This parking lot is primarily This parking lot is primarily used by staff, by Aldi warehouse employees. And the project aligns with the previous approvals to fit into the existing context. The last thing that I will say in talking with staff about this waiver is that the denial from staff is coming from a place of, you know, enforcing the code. One thing that we're happy that there are waivers that exist within your code so we can come before you and ask for this waiver. And the last thing that we'll mention is that the, in granting this waiver, it would reduce the area for vegetation within the site. So those landscape medians would be planted with trees and shrubs as per code required. So we are willing, and the applicant, Aldi team, is willing to plant the existing, or plant the vegetation that would be required within those medians elsewhere on the site. We could be, we'd be open to suggestions, but we would suggest planting them along that southern property line where there's currently no buffer because it's industrial, a budding industrial. So if approved, if the waiver is approved, the applicant would be willing to mitigate some of the effects of losing those landscape islands by planting trees elsewhere on the site. That would be more aligned with public benefit. And if not on the southern border, maybe somewhere towards the front of the site where they could be seen by the public. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion? I'll start this way.
Uh, no. No for me either.
So I have a question. So for staff, so it's been like this for how long?
Well, this is an amendment to a previously approved site plan. So the square footage that was previously approved for warehouse spaces is much greater than what's being proposed in terms of the site plan applications. So staff believes that the applicant does have plenty of room to provide the additional, or the required landscape strip. So the picture that Logan shows, I believe it's in the north part of the property.
Yes, that existing.
The property. And the code does have a caveat that mentions that there is a minimum of 10 parking spaces where that code section becomes applicable. So, and I think in that picture, it may be possible where there is not a continuous 10 parking spaces that would require that median. As you can see, it's break, the parking, one, two, three, four, five, six, there is an island. So it's not a continuous 10 spaces.
There is precedent elsewhere in the city as well, or in the village, I might add. We were looking at some other parking lots. Carmax was one that was recently mentioned to us. And their existing parking lot does not have the landscape divider medians as well.
Thank you.
And just, just so the Commission is aware, just because other sites within the village do not have that doesn't mean it's not a code requirement. So the code requires the thing that they're requesting waiver from, just so you understand that whether it exists anywhere else in the village doesn't have any bearing on the request before you tonight. I just will note that her, what I think I heard her say was that they're willing to plant the vegetation elsewhere on the site. That is not part of the packet before you. So if there's a desire on the part of the Commission to include that, that would need to be included in any motion to approve. Because that's not written in the justification, and that's in the backup. Thank you.
Another question for staff. Do you also disagree with the retention area being minimized that they would have to do other underground? Are you aware of any of those challenges?
Yeah, obviously, we're zoning. There's a lot of ingenuity, including to what she mentions. From our engineers will have to look at it to see the, to the extent of what needs to be done when it comes to stormwater management. So I can't speak to that. However, you know, looking at the space itself, that the landscape strip can be provided and meet code, and that would remove the request for a waiver.
Okay. Yeah, my just concern would be, of course, that, that kind of burden that it would take if you, with the engineering that we're unsure about right now, that would take. And there's obviously been a lot more storms and flooding and issues. So that's something I don't want to see be an issue in the future.
If I, go ahead. If I may, I think one of, one of the things, we don't have enough evidence from, from the packet that actually shows that. Obviously, this was part of, every department's reviewed this. So that's one of the reasons why we're recommending denial.
We do have our engineer here who can speak to that a little bit more as well, if you'd like.
Madam Chair, if I could swear her in, could you state your name for the record?
Dana Gillette with Erdman Anthony.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
So as we add the, the parking, parallel parking islands, it would push all of the pavement to the south towards that, can you see the mouse if I move it? So we've got this open detention area here. And as all of this edge of pavement moves south to, you know, another 15 feet, it would, it would encroach on that, that little green space that we're using for the, the surface water management. And that's where it would eliminate it. And as she mentioned, it would add a little bit of additional impervious also.
So I hear you mentioned it would, it would take about 15 feet. Do you know how large that retention area is?
Not much wider than 15 feet. So we have a bank coming down from the parking spaces, and then a flat bottom that's about 15 feet wide. And then it goes back up another bank to the, the fire driveway that's going around the building there.
So it'd be taking up pretty much all of that retention space.
Yeah, it would become a V and not a detention pond. We're using it for water quality.
Wasn't there a landscape waiver on that?
I don't, I mean, this isn't. I don't have, I don't have any issues with the, with the waiver, but you had asked about, you're open to suggestions. So if you continue to encounter issues, I would suggest planting diamonds, landscape diamonds, to get that additional landscape material should you have issues with this going forward. That would be my suggestion.
We would be open to the diamonds.
Okay. Is there any comment, public comment online? Is there any public comment in the room? You have to come to the.
Come to the podium if you could, ma'am.
Yep.
And when you get there, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Karen Senate. I live at 187 Bob White, right across from the warehouse. I'd like to know what you're going to do for the residents across the canal. It took, how long has Aldi's been there?
About 10 years.
About 10 years? It hasn't even covered the wall just barely right now, after 10 years. What are you going to do for us?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So there is a landscape buffer on that west side of the site. In addition to a large open space that does provide additional buffering, this entrance here will be just for cars. So we've eliminated the heavy truck traffic and distribution trucks that's more facing the regal and the more commercial and industrial uses. So we've tried to buffer as much as we can from the existing residential areas and reduce truck traffic.
Madam Chair. So what wall are we, was she mentioning?
There is a wall, that's this wall, right?
Yes, there's a perimeter wall there along the west property line of the Aldi site. It was installed, you know, at the origination, I think it was about 10 years ago, maybe 12, to abate noise, although the trucks are not in this area. It's not a very noisy edge of the facility.
This is all kind of underneath the site plan discussion.
Yeah. Approved plan.
Yeah, and this discussion, I feel, is more appropriate for the site plan rather than the.
That's correct.
The landscape waiver at this point.
Chair, if I could ask you to solicit for any other public comment, and then when you're finished with public comment, close public comment. Thank you.
Just a.
Comment on the landscape waiver. Yes.
施工队， correct, sir?
I am, yep.
Raise your right hand for me.
This is my name, sorry.
Thank you. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, this is a completely private parking lot. The only way in is to get past our guard shack. No public comes in and parks there other than employees. And it is surrounded by the fence, complete buffer all the way around the building. So if that has anything to do with it, just keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I just want the resident to know, we're going to talk about that issue at the next item. Okay? There's two items on this property. So the next item is when we're going to talk about your issue. Sorry. Can you hear me better now? No.
So the, your comments, your comments are more applicable to the site plan application, not this landscape waiver. So that's the second. That's the next item on the agenda.
But what she's saying is you're going to address your comment in the next application, okay? So when the next application comes, you can come back to the podium and make your comments at that time. And Madam Chair, if I could just ask you to, to make sure there's nobody else in the, in the audience who wants to make public comment before you close public comment.
Is there any more public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Okay, so is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve application number 24-078 with the stipulation of the offered planting vegetation that would normally be included elsewhere on the site.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Leland. So motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor of the modified motion approval with landscape addition?
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect. Passes unanimous. So the next item on the agenda is application number 24-053 SPM AAR Aldi Distribution Expansion. The applicant Insight Studios on behalf of Florida South Division DC LLC is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval to modify the previously approved site plan to reduce the Phase II expansion from 151,172 square feet to 67,347 square feet of the new dry warehouse addition. Accommodate a parking lot expansion, modify the landscape areas, and account for the location of required public art for a property located at 1171 North State Road 7. Midi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. I thought we were doing better on those descriptions, but that one got a little long. So the applicant remains sworn on this item, but I'll ask the Commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application before you is application number 24-053 SPM AAR. The applicant is requesting site plan modification and architectural approval to modify the previously approved site plan to reduce the Phase II expansion from 151,172 square feet to 67,347 square feet of the new dry warehouse addition. To accommodate parking lot expansion, modify the landscape areas, and account for the location of required public art for a property located at 1171 North State Road 7. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, color, materials, and landscape plan. This slide illustrates the existing, the previously approved site plan expansion. And it was approved for approximately 151,172 square feet, which is highlighted in red on your screen. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan. The building expansion highlighted in red is approximately 67,347 square feet designated for the proposed storage expansion. No proposed changes to access to the site. Still access to the site through State Road 7 via Aldi Way. The applicant, again, is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture. Landscape plan. This is the overall proposed landscape cover sheet. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan, the affected area, which is enlarged. This slide illustrates the proposed elevations, which will be the west elevation and the south elevation to the bottom of the screen. The following are site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed site plan modification. Just for the record, we'll read it into the record. The project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of Palm Beach County Traffic Concurrence Standards. The site shall be maintained free of all trash at all times. The art in public places, AIPP, requirements in section 26-75.5 of the Village Code must be met. The public art requirements for this project is 1% of the total vertical construction cost using a certified cost estimate of the overall Aldi planned industrial development. The remaining minimum balance to be met for this project is $182,000 after accounting for the previously fulfilled AIPP contribution of $68,000. Maximum public art contribution of $250,000 based on the provided 19.5 million certified cost estimate of expansion renovation costs minus the $68,000, which this is how they arrive to the $182,000 requirement for this. The public art installation shall be in the location depicted on the site plan and installed prior to the assurance of the certificate of occupancy. Staff is recommending application number 24-053 SPM AAR and resolution 24-24, subject to approval of application number 24-078, which is a landscape waiver, and waiver order LW24-03. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josu. And do you have a presentation?
So we've already discussed all these core values. Josu has given a pretty good explanation of what the request is here tonight. I've already discussed the site context and the surrounding uses. The existing zoning is industrial, and the future land use is industrial. We fit in to and comply with the comprehensive plan and all the zoning performance standards, except for the landscape waiver that we just asked for. But other than that, we meet all the standards. As Josu discussed in the previous approval, we had a much larger footprint for the expansion as previously approved. So it was 151,172 square feet that was previously approved. The proposed building is much smaller, it's 67,374 square feet, which has allowed us to expand the parking area as well. This is the same site plan that we were discussing before, showing the proposed warehouse expansion and the parking area and retention areas. As you can see, since it came up in a comment, there is an existing landscape buffer on that west side of the site with an eight-foot wall that's existing there. We meet all of the standards, as I mentioned. We exceed the pervious space and exceed some of the setbacks. We are allowed to go up to that 33-feet in height because there was formerly a variance approved with the, with the previous application. So we're not exceeding the existing height of the building. Josu already went through the architecture, but these are the elevations that were provided to fit in with the existing building. This is the location. is the location for the public art that we have proposed. So this was helped, or this was chosen with the help of staff about where the best location for this public art will be. So that will be at the entrance to the site. And then there are also five EV spaces that we are, that are part of this, this application. So we'd like to add some EV spaces to the, to the existing parking area. And as Josu mentioned, staff is recommending approval for the, for the site plan modification and architectural review.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the board?
I just wanted to hear the, I guess we'll wait for the public comment. I'll hold my question till then.
Just to clarify, you said the existing landscape buffer is already in place, so there's trees there.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they, do you know how tall they are compared to the fencings there, just in preparation for the question that maybe?
Yeah, they've been in for a few years, so they probably would have gone in closer to a code minimum height, but they've had a few years to mature and grow. We'd be happy to kind of take some pictures and come back to the, to the council or commission with some photos for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Josu, I just have a question for you. Sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
Sorry. So the only reason why they're before us, coming before us, is because they are reducing the building square footage. So if they wanted to build the much larger building today, they could do that and not have to go through any process, correct?
That's correct. That was approved.
Alright, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Is there any comment online? No. Okay, so is there any public comment? So now is your time to come up and talk about... And if you can...
Building.
If you can just, sorry, if you can just restate your name for the record.
I can't hear you.
If you can just restate your name for the record.
My name is Karen Senate. I moved in 24 years ago to a preserve behind my house. I now have a concrete jungle. The landscaping has taken 10 years and it's, half of it's dead, it's never maintained, and I still can see a wall. Now you're going to add more. I want some, a company, a landscaping company that can get something that doesn't look like I live across from a concrete jungle when I moved into a preserve. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? No, okay. Go ahead, Anna.
Yes, I knew you were going to get up and address that. So, you know, are you guys keeping up the trees? I mean, obviously we don't have any pictures or anything, but can you describe what's going on there?
Yeah, I, you know, believe that Aldi in good faith planted those trees and is maintaining them. But we, we, like I said, we can go out to the site and take some pictures to verify that the landscaping is matured. I mean, I think with any trees or landscaping, they can look a little bit premature at first, and they take a few years to grow in and mature. So hopefully over time that the trees grow and you won't be able to see the wall. That was never our intention, and we'll, we'll do our best to ensure that that landscaping is being maintained properly, and to my knowledge, it is at this time, so.
I have a question because of the comment, the additional request that was made for the landscape waiver, what that does to this application.
So that would need to be an additional one. I thank you for bringing that up. That was going to jump in before any motions were brought to. But that, that will need to be a condition of any approval on this item, because that was a condition of the last of the site plan, and the landscape plan will need to be revised to reflect that additional landscaping wherever they propose to plant it. If I could just respond to that comment, so whatever was approved by the council as part of the original development and the original landscape plan, the building would not have been CO'd without the landscaping having been installed in accordance with the plans that were approved by the village council. So I would encourage you, we've heard the concern here from a resident tonight, so staff will evaluate that from a code enforcement perspective, if there are any deficiencies. But you're on notice now, so double-check and make sure nothing has died off that's creating a problem. But we're certainly, staff is on notice and will elevate that. But I wanted the commission to know that a CO wouldn't have been issued unless all the landscaping that was approved was installed at the proper heights that were approved as part of the landscape plan. Okay?
Thank you, Midi, for that clarification.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions, comments?
I was just going to add to that. We do have sprinklers throughout the project, so everything has been sprinkled. As she said, it was CO'd at one time. Trees do die, we can't help that, if it was 10 years ago or whatever. We could, some of the landscape that we're talking about from our previous application, put some of that towards this area to help add maybe some trees there and take the burden or provide a little bit more buffer than was already there in the original plan. I don't have a problem with that. We could add some trees there too if we, if we desire. Aldi wants to help out with the public, we don't want to have bad neighbors. So, or, I'm sorry, not bad neighbors, we don't want sad neighbors. So if we, if we can add some trees there and that would help out the process, we can do that. We'll surely look into that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any motion?
Yeah, so, I'll try this. I make a motion to approve application number 24-053 with the addition from the previous item, right, the condition.
And if you're okay, with the condition that the landscape plan be revised to add the landscaping from the eliminated perpendicular divider strips to other portions of the site, perhaps along the, that boundary. What direction is that? Is that the?
West.
West boundary?
So with that, and then the additional trees being added to the west boundary there. So hopefully that they won't see so much of the concrete jungle.
I'll second.
Thank you. So motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Derry, per Midi, per language from Midi. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? See that it passes unanimous. Alright, so the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is on Tuesday, November 26th, 2024. Is there a motion to adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in fav, I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So now I will open up the local planning agency meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd. Let the record reflect that all of us are still here, so we don't need to take roll call again.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll move on to the minutes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the April 23rd, 2024 LPA meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 23rd, 2024 LPA meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Derry, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See that it passes unanimous. Okay, so the first item on the LPA agenda is applica, this is a long Midi. Application number 24-040 Z-Tex Animal Hospital and Vet Clinic. The applicant Gunster on behalf of West Palm Radiation Associates LLC is requesting a text amendment to the village's zoning code to amend Section 26-22 to add a definition for the term veterinary oncology center, no overnight stay. Section 26-87 to allow veterinary oncology centers no overnight stay as a special exception use with this, within the CO office commercial district, and Section 26-75.8 to add supplemental regulations for this use within the CO zoning district, applicable village-wide, but requested specifically for a property located at 12953 Palms West Drive. Midi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll apologize to the commission. There was a typo in the heading of this agenda item, the second to the last line. It, there's a missing H there. And there was also some kind of formatting issue on the draft language that's in the agenda item summary. However, the full ordinance was in the agenda board document backup, which does not have the formatting issue. I'm not sure what happened there, but I could not, for the life of me, get that fixed. So I apologize for those inconsistencies. With that, I'll turn to the applicant and ask you to come to the podium and state your name. Anybody who's going to be speaking, you're a council, so you do not need to be sworn, but can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And can you state your name for the LPA, please?
John Roach.
Thank you very much. And I'll turn to the local planning agency and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
I spoke with Mr. Seymour.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Go ahead, Josu, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application before you is 24-040 Z-Tex. The applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to the village code to amend Section 26-22 and 26-87 of the village code to add a definition for the term veterinary oncology center, no overnight stay, and add veterinary oncology center no overnight stay as a special exception use within the office commercial zoning district, and add entirely a new section 26-75.8, veterinary oncology centers, no overnight stays within the office commercial zoning district to provide for supplemental land use regulations for the use. The applicant has indicated that they intend to operate with the proper approvals of veterinary oncology center at property located at 12953 Palms West Drive. And this is also highlighted on your screen. This slide illustrates a summary of the proposed text amendment, providing a definition for veterinary oncology center, no overnight stay. I'll just read it into the record. Section 26-22, definitions, veterinary oncology center, no overnight stay of facility established to provide examination, diagnostic, and cancer treatment services for domesticated animals kept for pleasure rather than for commercial purposes. Treatment services may include, but is not limited to, surgery, chemotherapy, radiation therapy, I'm going to try this word, immunotherapy, or palliative care. The facility may not be used for overnight boarding. Again, this slide is, illustrates the proposed text amendment. Midi, I'm not sure if we should read, it's on the backup.
It's on the screen, it's in the backup. You don't have to read it for me.
Correct, so this is in the backup. Thing as well for the slide, it's all provided in the backup as well. Section 26-87, commercial, office commercial district. This use will be a special exception under parenthesis K, veterinary oncology center, no overnight stay. And of course, reference the additional requirements at Section 26-75.8, as mentioned above. Staff requests a recommendation of approval of application number 24-040 Z-Tex and ordinance number 1052 be submitted to village council. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roach, do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is John Roach. I'm an in-house land planner with the Gunster Law Firm in West Palm Beach. With me is Brian Seymour, land use attorney and colleague at Gunster. Some of you on the dais refer to him as Lisa's husband. So we're before you, as Josu had indicated, we're before you this evening for a text amendment to the village's code to allow veterinary oncology centers without overnight stays within the office commercial zoning district. This would be as a special exception use. We've indicated in the text amendment, we've narrowly defined the use as indicated by Josu in his presentation, and we wanted to make sure that it was specific to those, those elements within that definition. There do not appear to be any such facilities within the village that offer onsite radiation therapy as part of their services. Our research has indicated that there are actually only nine within the state, and one of them is within Palm Beach County, but again, none within the village limits. So this is a unique opportunity for the village to provide this, access to such a specialized use. The office commercial zoning district currently allows medical offices by right, but the proposed use is prohibited. It's actually not actually, it's not referenced in the code at all, hence the creation of the definition. The village's regulations do address veterinarian clinics, animal hospitals, and so forth, and allow them with overnight stay within the general commercial, neighborhood commercial, mixed-use districts. So this will be, this will be completely different from that. The amendment proposes the use only as a special exception, as we indicated. It would require public hearings before yourself, as well as the village council, and includes the supplemental regulations that were included within the text amendment within your backup. The basis for these is to provide that additional protection for adjacent properties, as well as ensure compatibility with existing uses that are within the vicinity, as well as potential uses that are otherwise permitted. Unless it's otherwise desired by the commission, I won't go through the basis for all of them, but I will emphasize on the first one, in which an existing radiation vault has to exist within the premise at the time of the special exception application. So this ensures that the radiation treatment will actually occur within, on the property, and that there is that commitment as part of that use. While the text amendment does apply village-wide, Josu indicated there is a specific property that our client has with regards to this use. So upon approval, our client will be back before you with a special exception for an existing office space located on Palms West Drive, just east of the Palms West Hospital. The text amendment complies with the comprehensive plan, and as outlined in our application, and our client's excited about bringing the future of their business to the village. So we appreciate your time this evening and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments by the board? No.
I have one question. So that building used to be medical offices. Is the whole building going to be switched over to veterinary, or is there still going to be medical offices there as well?
No, it'd just be one space within one of the buildings. Yeah.
And what about any issues with any sick people, I guess, for lack of a better term, coming into the building, maybe getting scared of animals or anything like that? Like, have you, has applicant thought about that? Maybe that's for the future item, I'm not sure.
I mean, that would be, that could be evaluated as part of the special exception use as far as what the immediate adjacent uses are and how the, the proposed use is compatible with those. But we're proposing as part of the text amendment and then the narrowly tailored definition, that it is strictly for veterinary oncology. It's not a general veterinarian clinic. It's not an animal hospital that serves, you know, any type of illness. It is purely focused on oncology.
Got you. So it's not going to be that regular vet with lots of animals going in and out.
Correct. Exactly.
Thank you for that.
So I understand that no overnight boarding and everything, but I'm just curious from my own knowledge of, if it's also a surgery center and something were to happen, would the animals be transported if they can't stay overnight and they still need to be monitored? I'm just curious how that works with prohibiting overnight.
For the record, Brian Seymour, I'm the attorney for the applicant. It doesn't really work like that. It's not like humans, where they have another hospital. So if you're at an ER, an off-site ER, and you have to go to a hospital for something, they have the facility to deal with these pets. We're really talking about cats and dogs. I mean, theoretically, birds and turtles, but not for oncology, right? So it's, and it's a very specific surgery that goes with the oncology practice. So it's, it isn't something that that would really happen.
It wouldn't happen.
It wouldn't, yeah. They don't need to move them. They have the facility there to do what they need to do.
So they would stay overnight, possibly?
No, you don't have to keep overnight. If there was an overnight requirement by a surgery, they'd have to go somewhere else.
So they would have to be. I, I just asked.
No, no, I'm saying they wouldn't come here to start with. If a surgery is going to create an overnight stay where a dog, cat has to stay overnight, they wouldn't come here. There are other places where you have overnight stays allowed that they could do surgeries. So it, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't happen.
Well, I mean, just, the reason I'm asking is, I've even had a dog that went in for, to have their teeth cleaned, and they ended up having to stay overnight because they stopped breathing.
Oh, you're saying something happens during a procedure?
So what would?
I thought you were saying the procedure would start. In that case, we would have to transport them. Yes, we'd have to go to work with another hospital.
So there would be absolutely no stays overnight. They would just be transported. Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So I don't really have a question for you guys. I have a question more for staff and, you know, kind of voiced, I know. I voiced this in the past, that I don't really like very specific to one project. I get that they're here and they're asking for this, but as far as opening up the code and making changes, I don't like very specific ones. and making changes, I don't like very specific ones, just, let's just say, tomorrow you have a veterinary neurology specialty, like vets have the same specialities that humans do. So if tomorrow a neurology center, they decide that they want to, I think that this would be fine in OC as well. And same thing with, like, internal or cardiologists, like, people are having specialized care for their pets. I just want to leave room for those other specializations to occur in OC. So I don't, again, I get that this is what you're here for, but I want to, I want to make it more broad, because in your presentation, you said that it's supposed to be village-wide, but this is very specific, because it says for radiation, you have to have a pre-existing radiation vault. And I get for an oncology center, you would want that, but for other specialities, I want to, I want to look at it holistically, I want to be a planner, I want to really look at it and not do a one-off code amendment, that's all. That's my recommendation, that's what I have to say about it.
So let me just say that I think what he was saying, in terms of applicability village-wide, it just means that the changes to the, to the CO zoning district, so any other property in CO, obviously, as you know, could make use of the code amendment, should it be approved. I'll, I'll say duly noted on your comment, but this is the applicant's request, so we process that as staff, and we bring it to you, staff has vetted it, but I hear what you're saying, and certainly for village-wide and village-initiated things, that is the preference, but this is their request to the village.
Could staff not come in after the fact or concurrent with and open it up and fix it or look at it?
We could, depending on how this application is processed, yes, that could certainly be opened up in the future. That would certainly be something that would be handled through strategic planning process with the village council, but yes, in the future, that could happen.
That would be, I mean, that would be my, that would be my personal recommendation, just so it's not, you know, so specific, so we're not going through this again should a neurology or a cardiologist or something like that come, come through. I just want to look at it holistically, I get that they're here in front of us, I just, I'm a planner by nature, it's what I do for a living, I want to be a planner, I want to look at it, that's all.
So just so I'm clear, it'd be something along the lines of like veterinary specialty centers?
Yes, yeah.
No overnight stays, as opposed to just this specific?
Correct. I mean, the, the backup language, this is very specific to oncology, so, you know, that language would have to be tweaked or changed by staff in the future or concurrent with their application, I get it, and they can have their own specialities, whatever, but I said you were fine, I don't.
I know, but this is a very, this is very unique because of the radiation. So it, it's not, it's not like a neurologist who might just be another vet shop that can go somewhere else. It's the vault that makes this the unique use, which is why we tailored this to the oncology. Just, I'm not saying you don't do it otherwise, but it would be, that's why the special exception and the criteria for this use is very narrow, that's all.
But a vet isn't allowed in OC, and so my thought is, is that if it is like a vet cardiologist or a vet neurology, it, why, right, why not allow it in OC as well? That's all.
CO, yeah.
CO. OC, CO.
Guys, staff, we hear you, but just so the, the LPA is, the application before you is as drafted, so your, your action tonight is on the application that the applicant has presented here tonight?
Yes.
I have another question, Madam Chair, it's for Mitty. So can we add a stipulation to the, to the zoning code, something along the lines of ensuring that the other medical offices for humans are not impacted? I'm not sure how to.
So I think, I think your point about that, that's a very good point. I think that's more appropriately addressed at the special exception use approval, so, and that can be dealt with through accesses, you know, how people are coming and going through the building, without the applicant's consent to that, this is what they're proposing. So I think the action tonight is on what they've proposed. If they're willing to stipulate to or agree to something, you can certainly bring it up, but to mandate a condition, I don't think would be appropriate at this stage, because this is what's before you tonight. And I think that would all be addressed as part of the special exception criteria, because that's how the building is, is operating, and that's how the use would operate in the building.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Any other comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-040.
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Derry, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, before you called the vote, did you, I didn't, may have not heard you, but did you solicit public comment?
No.
Before you called the vote, if you could.
Sorry, is there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sorry. When no one's here, I forget, I apologize. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
The motion on that one, I'm sorry? Thank you.
Kamor seconded.
And Kamor seconded.
Heard the second, I didn't hear the first, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No, it's okay. Second item on the agenda is ordinance number 1050 proposes to amend the village code of ordinances at chapter 22 subdivision of land to revise the plating requirements in accordance with Senate Bill 812 and newly enacted section 177.073 Florida statutes. Mitty.
On the presentation?
Oh, no. Oh, because it's not.
Just wanted to see a brief moment of panic. No, no.
No?
You're correct, it's me. So this one actually already went to village council last week. We're a little out of order on this one, just because of the timing, but this is, this revision is in direct response to a change to the state law. As you all likely are very well aware, your code already has a split process for preliminary plat approval and final plat approval. The change to the state law mandates that prior to final plat approval, there has to be an expedited building permit process to allow a certain number of building permits to be issued before final plat is approved by the village council. So that's the short story. What we did basically is move requirements that were previously in the final plat requirements of the code up to preliminary plat, so that we get those things in advance. There was a change to the state law with regard to the bonding requirements. The bond amount is 130%, so that is reflected in here, and again, it's required at preliminary plat rather than final plat. I hate to tell you, I told the council this, and I probably should have said it in better words, but this is state law requirements, so we don't have an option not to do it. I think I said to them that their hands were somewhat tied. We have to do this. You can tell me if you want revisions to it, but we have to comply with state law. The effective date of the new law was October 1st, so we are trying to get this on the books as quickly as we can. There are a few developments that nobody's made use or tried to make use of it yet, but people are, as October has turned the page here, people are starting to contemplate this. So with that, I'll answer any questions. We did add some definitions to track the state law language, so it's a pretty straightforward amendment, and again, it's in response to what the state law now requires the village to do. So with that, I'll pause and ask if you have any questions. Thank you.
No, ma'am. Do we need public comment from the?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Seeing none.
You ran them all off.
I know. Is there a motion on this?
I move that we approve ordinance number 1050 as proposed.
Thank you. So motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimous. Congrats, Mitty. The next meeting for the LPA is Tuesday, November 26th, 2024. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I second that again.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
They used to make fun of me.